Good evening. Welcome to the November 7th regular monthly school board meeting. I ask you all, please stand for a brief moment of silence. Hey, ma'am. You may be seated. We will now have Dr. Nguyen, our Assistant Superintendent, bring up and introduce some very important guests on this evening.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce two wonderful students from IC Norcom. We have Mrs. Zakiya Williams, who is a member of the class of 2021 and is the junior class president at Norcom. She is currently taking advanced placement courses and working toward an advanced diploma, and has plans of participating in the first college program during her senior year. She's a major ret in the school's marching band, the Versatile 100. Zakiya has also been a member of the school's volleyball team and served as an assistant athletic trainer during our football season. As a participant in the Upward Bound Program, she's had the opportunity to explore college and career readiness, and Zakiya gives back to her community in the form of volunteerism as a member of the Ascend Program, a young women's organization developed and operated by the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. She would like to pursue a career in the medical field as a neonatologist. Zakiya is the daughter of Mr. and Mrs. Antoine and Marquita Williams. Please come up. And if her parents are here, could you please stand? Thank you. Next, we have Jayden Johnson, and Jayden is also a member of the class of 2021. She participates in the Early Scholars Academy at Tidewater Community College, and she is working toward a certificate in general studies. Jayden was a member of the school's junior ROTC program where she was appointed the position of Unit Commanding Officer. She is currently Junior Class Secretary and is also an active member of Norcom's National Honor Society, where she holds the office of Vice President. Jayden finds time to volunteer in her military community with his after-school program. After graduating from Norcom, Jayden plans to attend Clark Atlanta University and major in psychology and participate in the ROTC program. Her hopes are to one day join the United States Navy as a commissioned officer, where she will use her talents as a logistics officer. Jayden's mother is Dawn German, who is currently on deployment, and I believe she's here tonight with another family member, correct? Oh, okay, with her counselor. Come for it, Jayden, thank you. And we also want to recognize Dr. Legana Foster, who is the principal, and any Norcom High School staff members who are here. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag... Oh. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Good evening, Chairman, Parent, and Members of the School Board. I am Jayden Johnson, the Junior Class Secretary for the class of 2021. I have the distinct pleasure of both representing IC Norcom High School as well as introducing... Thank you. As well as introducing you to all of the amazing things happening at the mighty Greyhound Nation. The mission of IC Norcom High School is to provide a safe environmental setting where all students acquire a strong academic background and essential life skills needed to succeed in a global, technology-driven environment. We seek the combined effort and support of staff, students, parents, and the community. First, we have one, if not the best athletic programs in the city of Portsmouth, providing everything in recreational sports from football to golf. Many of our students go on to play division sports at the collegiate level. There are also various performing and visual arts programs, clubs, and organizations my classmates and I have the opportunity to participate in. Our arts programs foster the creativity that lives within our students. Our award-winning marching band, choral group, and junior ROTC unit are asked to lend their talents throughout the Hampton Roads area, performing for different venues throughout the school year. Our performing art programs puts on plays that can give any performance on Broadway a run for their money. Our visual arts programs beautify the school with amazingly designed murals. We have clubs and organizations for almost every interest of our school population, both academic and social. Norcom CTE programs include TV production, which serves all three high schools, and teaches students about the world that exists on the other side of the camera. My classmates get to produce their own program called DRIP TV. Cosmetology, nail tech, and sports medicine all provide our students with practical training and certifications that they can use beyond the walls of their respective high schools. Some of our academic programs are First College, the Early Scholars Academy, the STEM Program, Advanced Placement and Dual Enrollment, which meets both at Norcom and on the Tidewater Community College campus. These programs give us a step forward as we pursue our future endeavors. Many members of the class of 2019 took full advantage of these opportunities, beginning their first year of college much more prepared than their peers. The class of 2019 also received over $8 million in scholarships, grants, and aides, and were accepted to more schools than any other high school in Portsmouth, 64 different colleges and universities. Greyhounds are multifaceted, so their educational community has to be. We take pride in being the high school in Portsmouth most steeped in history. Our prestigious alumni have career paths that encompass a wide range of different vocations, and members of the Greyhound Nation can be found almost everywhere on the globe. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to enlighten you as well as enrich you about the opportunities happening at Israel Charles Norcom High School. Thank you.
One moment, ladies, if you can come back up. Board Member Hines will have something for you.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, ladies. Zakiya, thank you for being here. Neonatal, that's wonderful. It's a field that everybody needs. Jayden, well, not everybody, but you know what I'm saying. We love it when you're there. Jayden, commissioned officer, I couldn't see you doing anything else. Once you said that, it fits, so good luck with that. But I want to say thank you to both of you for giving such a good face to Norcom High School that is not necessarily always athletic, because we do always see the athletics of Norcom High School, but you two exemplify what it is to be an academic and a Greyhound. And speaking as a president, that's kind of hard for me to say sometimes. However, I love the fact that you're here. I love the fact that you love your school and that you represent them so well. And I know that you will do nothing but great things from here because you've had a great start. So thank you very much for being here tonight, and good luck. Thank you.
As she's racing to her seat, 3.5 on the agenda is the school board mission statement by Board Member Hines.
Good evening, everybody. The mission of Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all citizens in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship, as our two young ladies just exemplified so well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.6, attendance, Ms. Shaimless. Oh, it'd be electronic vote for your attendance. Now I'll reach over to mine.
Eight members present, one member absent.
Agenda item 3.7, consideration of the agenda for November 7, 2019. We need a motion for that. It has been moved by Board Member Hines and second, my Board Member Allen. Any discussion? Make your vote known by trying to vote at this time.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Agenda item 4.1. One of my favorite parts of the meeting, our monthly report by our student representative, Ms. Nyla Deans. Will you come forward at this time?
Good evening, Vice Chair Patillo, Dr. Nguyen, Members of the School Board, and all those assembled. Tonight, I will be giving my... I'll be giving my November's monthly Student Representative Report. And as most of you know, I have put together a PowerPoint for you all. So if anyone would die right there, turns to the board. All right, so first off, we have Woodrow Wilson High School students in action. This shows some of the students from their driver's ed class who designed their parking lot to raise awareness for seatbelt safety. Because many of you know that people who have been injured or lost their lives due to not wearing their seatbelts in motor vehicle accidents. So this way, by supporting it and letting people know about seatbelt safety, you know, we ensure that our students and others are driving safely. Next, we have Churchland High School's JROTC. They just completed their first drill competition, in which they placed second place. So they were led by their Lieutenant Cole Pratt and their newest instructor, CWO3 Man. So I want to give congratulations to them for accomplishing that. And we look forward to seeing them complete their other competitive, or wherever they're competing in, their next, you know, next one, so. All right, now we have our students giving back. So we have students from Churchland and Craddock. Churchland, their students gave their time. On, I believe it was a Saturday morning, they were giving out food and care packages to Portsmouth residents. And we have Craddock Middle School Access Program kids who were walking around the community, picking up trash. So it's always nice to see our students giving back to their communities. It's very important, you know, and we always support that, you know. So this might help encourage other students to go out there, you know, and not just do stuff in school, but also outside of school. All right, so these are some of November events that are coming up. Well, that one has already passed. Everyone knows that on Tuesday, we had our election day. And so we really want to thank everyone who came out to support and vote, you know, to the time of their workday to come out. And we have Veterans Day coming up on November 11. And there will be a ceremony that will be held at High Street Landing at 11 o'clock for military families and veterans. So I know it's a lot of different parades that goes on on November 11, but this is one that will be held close to home. So if you don't feel like driving that far out, you can attend this one. And I'll be attending this one, so. And we have Thanksgiving, you know. Everybody excited for that? I know I am. So, yeah, we will, everybody knows, all those systems will be closed, schools will be closed. So this is a great time to see everybody, be with their families, you know, and give a thanks to everybody that they care about also. And I would like to acknowledge that Portsmouth's finest. I'll be recording a new episode pretty soon. I talked to some of our safety officers at Norcom, and I'll be interviewing them for the newest episode. So that should be going up pretty soon as I record it. So if everybody would like to tune into that, they can. And I'm really excited to, you know, I'm covering school safety awareness this year. That's my topic, and I'm really excited to go through with that. Thank you.
One moment. Nyla. Ms. Hines, will I have something to say to you?
Thank you, Vice Chair. We just received an email today from VSB. I need to make sure that you get it. It's about school safety that Secret Service actually did. And it was a service over 11 years. So we'll make sure that you get that. So as you go out and you're researching and talking, you have some talking points and have that research behind you, so.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you so much for another wonderful report. Thank you. Agenda item 5.1, our monthly report, Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Nguyen.
Good evening, Vice Chair Patillo, and Members of the Board and the Audience. Before we go into our special report tonight, I wanted to bring your attention to the items that are in your board dots. But I also want to share with you that the Title I program has worked diligently to build a collaborative partnership with our Reach Incorporated of Norfolk. And this partnership has produced hundreds of books for PPS students free of charge. Today, we are happy to announce the most recent benefit of this relationship is that Reach Norfolk chose the Portsmouth Public Schools Title I program as the recipient of 1,000 books. This donation was obtained by Reach from the Society of Children's Book Writers and Illustrators via a grant. And Reach Incorporated of Norfolk, along with the Madison Reading Project of Madison, Wisconsin, were the two recipients of this grant. Due to the mutually beneficial partnership they have with the PPS Title I Office, the Norfolk branch of Reach Incorporated has decided to make us the recipients of the entire 1,000 book collection. A donation celebration will be held on November 13, 6 o'clock PM, at John Tyler Elementary School for 100 of our students and parents. And we would like for you to join our celebration now. And moving forward, we have a very, very special presentation tonight from one of our stellar groups, From One Hand to Another Camp at Starbase. I'm going to introduce several students. We have with us here tonight Ms. Gray and Ms. Nichols, who are the camp sponsors and counselors with these students. And as I call your names, please come up. We have Nehemiah and Andre Brooks, and they're here with their parents. Mr. and Mrs. Brooks, if you're here, please stand, Mr. and Mrs. Brooks. Thank you. Nehemiah is a 10-year-old fifth grader at Churchland Academy Elementary School, and he excels academically and has been named Student of the Month on several occasions. He has a passion for creativity. Andre is an 11-year-old sixth grader at Churchland Academy Elementary School, and he consistently achieves academic excellence. He's in the Gifted Program and has a passion for people and art. We also have Karima Smith, who is with her parents. Mr. and Mrs. Smith, if you're here, please stand. Karima is a seventh grade student at Craddock Middle School, and she's actively participated in From One Hand to Another at Starbase Victory for two years. She's a part of the PPS Gifted and Talented Program, and she enjoys helping others, particularly young children at church and within the community. We have Xavier Warren, who is with his parents, David and Eve Warren. If they are here, please stand. Xavier is a seventh grader at Churchland Middle School, who participates in a host of camps at Starbase Victory. Some of his accomplishments include being the Vice President of the SCA, earning the Principal Star Award, and maintaining the superintendent's list yearly. He plays basketball, the piano, drawing, and loves video games. We have Alex Mack, who's with his parent, Tiffany Mack. Alex is a seventh grader at Portsmouth Christian School, and he's an honor roll student and athlete and a member of the football and basketball teams. Christina Hatcher is with her mother, India Hatcher. Ms. Hatcher, please stand. Christina is a fifth grader at Hodges Manor, and she enjoys reading and using the computer to play Roblox. Christina also participates in Portsmouth's Gifted and Talented Program. Deonte Banks is with his parents, Devotee Whitehead. Please stand. Deonte is a sixth grader, honor roll student at Lakeview Elementary, and he enjoys playing with his friends, math, staring at the stars at night. When he grows up, he wants to be a firefighter. Kayla Jones is with her mother, Cara Jones. Ms. Jones, please stand. Kayla has been a part of the GT program for over six years, and she is in the Envision Lead Grow Program, a program helping to produce young female entrepreneurs nationally. An All-Star Competitive Cheerleader for the past five years. She's in the All-City Chorus, a ballet dancer, and is a very active member of her church. So I'll turn this over to our group.
Good afternoon, Chair Parent, Vice Chair Patillo, Superintendent Bracy, all Board Members and those assembled. My name is Kayla Jones. It is my pleasure to speak on behalf of From One Hand to Another at Starbase Victory.
The From One Hand to Another Starbase Victory camp was designed to encourage STEAMM, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, Mathematics, and Motivation. This camp is in partnership with music artist Pharrell Williams and Starbase Victory. Photo will be going into its third year this summer.
The major focus and goal for this camp is to utilize steam to cultivate and understand the essence of entrepreneurship with true meaning and excitement. I was an entrepreneur in this camp this summer. I gained economic, marketing, organizational, and visual sense. As we networked with business owners in Old Town Business Association, they made time in their busy day to allow us to interview them about how they became and are continuing to be entrepreneurs.
Participants of the Old Town Business Association that networked with us include Way Back Yonder, Finer Things, Psycho Classics, Yooks on Us, Old Town Arts and Music, Little Shops on High, Soul Right Spins, Fine Footwear, Roger Brown's, Twisted Art and She Swang Marketplace.
All groups were tasked to invent an innovative new product using little bits, electronics, and our creativity. We used lots of short-tape model to present our marketable products. I personally enjoy all of the experiences that led up to us creating our own group invention. Shopping at Michael's Arts and Crafts was the best.
We also visited other places like downtown Portsmouth, the Museum of Contemporary Arts, the Vibe District in Virginia Beach, Kentville Skating Ring, and McArthur Mall. I'll mostly remember riding the HR Downtown. It was amazing.
I was up From One Hand to Another at Starbase Victory Camper. The experiences I had will stay with me forever. I enjoyed it so much, I hope to return next summer, but this time as a team mentor, so that I can share what I've learned. From One Hand to Another was incredible.
Let's give them a hand. And if you all can stay right there, Board Member Axon.
Thank you, Vice Chair Patillo. I was going to ask if they can stand and formulate a group picture, and if the parents wanted to come up, if they could. I see they were taking pictures from the back, so they can get a shot. So if the parents wanted to take pictures, come up, so you guys can get a group shot of their front faces. Any parents that want to get the parents. And you guys might want to get a little tighter, so they can get a better group shot.
Thank you, let's give them another hand.
I know this is not part of my role, but can Ian Lindo stand up? Ian Lindo, he won a spelling bee at Victory Elementary. Can everybody give him a hand for that?
Oh, that was great.
That was awesome.
That was amazing.
That was awesome.
He definitely just Kanye Wested the school board meeting, though. It's all good, it was all good. Moving on to 6.1. Madam Clerk, do we have any employee groups here tonight? All right. 6.2, as you all can see on your agenda, this is an exciting evening. We have a number of special recognitions that are going to happen from the board tonight, honoring some outstanding work that's happening in our division. To begin, I would like to ask if the Virginia Paladin, Ms. Sarah Gregory, could come to the dais at this time? The board will remember that this past August, we unanimously passed a resolution to the Virginia School Boards Association to name Ms. Gregory to the 2019 Media Honor Roll in recognition of her fair and balanced reporting on school division and education-related topics. We are fortunate to hear in Portsmouth to have Ms. Gregory's talents, not only to objectively report on the state of our schools each day, but she also helps to highlight our successes in wonderful ways. Can you join me and give her a hand as I approach the dais?
Thank you.
Virginia School Boards Association 2019 Media Honor Roll Program honoring Sarah Gregory, the Virginia Paladin. The Portsmouth City School Board recognizes your fair and balanced reporting on school division and education-related topics. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for the children who attend them. Again, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Next up tonight is a true honor for our division. We are excited to welcome Dr. Wayne Williams, Principal of Victory Elementary School. If you would come at this time. We are thrilled to announce that Victory is the first Portsmouth school to earn the Purple Star designation.
Thank you, Vice Chair Patillo, Board Members. We are very honored to be here tonight to receive this distinguished award. But before we continue, could all of our parents, students, faculty, and staff please stand up with me and accept this award? Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce you to two of our military-connected family members. We have Mrs. Jones and Petty Officer Roberts.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Team One Kenneth Roberts. I'm a torpedo man in the United States Navy. I've served in the military for 12 years. During my career, me and my family have lived in Hawaii, Guam, Georgia, and now Virginia. I'm currently attached to the USS Wyoming, SSBN 742. It's a nuclear ballistic missile submarine currently located in Norfolk Naval Shipyard, on schedule for its engineered refueling overhaul. From my experience, military moves are extremely stressful, is full of uncertainty, and comes with a lot of worry. Dr. Williams and his staff at Victory Elementary has shown us compassion and understanding. Their devotion and commitment to the family, and more important, the students, is beyond measure. We are truly thankful for our experience here. It's been a pleasure working with Dr. Williams and everyone at Victory. Their assistance to us has made transitioning seamless. Their assistance to us has made transitioning seamless. They deserve this long overdue recognition. I am truly proud of all the efforts and receiving the Purple Star shows others recognize us also. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and again, a big thank you to Dr. Williams and everyone. Everyone be safe and have a good night, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Cara Jones, and I'm the proud wife of an active-duty United Coast Guardsman. My family moved to the city of Portsmouth only having three days to find and purchase a home. Not knowing much about Portsmouth, or as we called it back then, Portsmouth, we had to decide where to live pretty quickly, just praying for the best. We always say we have been blessed with the outcome because our children attend a wonderful school. This school, yes, this school has an understanding of military families. We have an understanding and empathetic principal, Dr. Williams, assistant principal, Dr. Wilson, and many faculty who help my children and many other children, especially when my children's father is away and deployed for long periods of time. The school I am speaking of is Victory Elementary School. Victory has been diligent in their efforts to assist our local military families, serving over 160 military families per school year. Victory hosts a number of events to ease the transition of their military students, from the month of November being the month of the military family, to the month of April, which is the month of the military child. There's a day the entire school and the military child month wears purple in honor of military children, hosting a day for military parents to come and eat lunch with their children, have an ice cream social, and have a parade throughout the school. There is also a military life counselor at the school all day and every day who helps the military students socially and emotionally maneuver through everyday life. With the counselor, the military children meet together and create crafts, or even write letters to raise the spirits of the military families, both here and deployed. The counselor also speaks to the military children one-on-one and helps them cope with anything that they go through day-to-day, and it's a privilege and an honor to have the opportunity to speak on Victory Elementary School achieving the Purple Star Award, an opportunity that this is the first school in the city of Portsmouth in order to get. For its ongoing efforts, it's consistently going above and beyond in making the lives of our families one of its priorities. On behalf of all military spouses and military personnel, thank you very much for making our load lighter, caring about us, and our children as much as you do. Thank you.
Your words were beautiful. With that being said, it is my honor on behalf of the entire board to present the Certificate of Recognition and is hereby granted Victory Elementary School for earning the Virginia Department of Education's Purple Star Designation, presented on November 7, 2019, and designed by our Superintendent Dr. Eli Bracy III and the Board Chairman Mr. Claude Parent. Congratulations again.
Thank you, sir.
For two years in a row, we've had the honor of presenting to 14 out of 19 of our schools of their fully, of their full state accreditation standing. Let's give our 14 schools a hand. But on tonight, I'm even more excited. I heard that there's a beehive in the house. Y'all like how I did that? This year, not only do we have the beehive, but I hear a rumbling in the background, and I believe there's some truckers rolling through. What's that noise you say? This year, yes, Brighton Elementary School and Churchland Middle School earned accreditation for the first time in more than six years. Now, before we bring up Mr. Paul Wilson from Brighton and Dr. Kimsey from Churchland Middle, there's a short video we would like to show you to highlight these schools' journey back to accreditation. Please focus your attention to the screen.
I was not in shock. We were expecting to do it this year, but I won't lie, I screamed. Screamed in joy, screamed in excitement.
I can't wait until they let me tell them, I am bursting. It is such a culmination, and it's basically an affirmation of everything our staff and our students and our families have done.
I give them all the credit in the world because without them, it wouldn't be possible. When I first arrived here at Brighton, I got what I call perception, and I sat down with teachers and I asked them, you know, what do you think about the school? What are some challenges that we have? Did the same with parents and did the same with students. And it was the students' answers that hit my heart the most because they believed that they were capable, but they didn't believe that others believed in them.
That belief is contagious. I had to believe and do believe that every kid can succeed. At lots of points in their educational careers, they may have struggled. Some kids have never passed an SOL, ever. And when they come bounding down the hallway, giving me a high five, "I did it, I did it", that is the most amazing feeling.
Change is difficult, especially as you alluded to. I was principal number five in five years. I knew that in isolation, I wouldn't be able to accomplish anything, that we had to work all together. And so the very first thing that we put into place was an open door policy. I know that sounds crazy. I wanted to have conversation, I wanted to have collaboration.
It's like a web, and so every decision at our school, from what gets sent out, how we communicate with parents, how we teach, all of those things are in that web. And if we touch one thing, the whole web moves. It's about getting everybody that collaboration, getting everybody to work together.
We had to create a culture for success, a culture for excellence, that when you walk through this building, you know you're welcome, you're loved, you're gonna learn, and that you're gonna succeed.
We have to create that sense that the administrators are not there to nitpick you and find what's wrong. The administrators are there to find what's right and help you build on that to create your vision for where we can be.
To hear the news, I think is gonna be a joyous time for our school and for our community. I can imagine there are gonna be some tears. There are teachers who have been here through the long haul. I know the hard work of the staff, of them staying after school, of them coming in on Saturdays, of them preparing early during the summer, of them giving it 110% when they're here in the building. And now it's time to string together some victories. There's nothing better than winning a championship and then going to try to defend your title.
For families, knowing that they are sending their kids to a school that has their kids' best interests at heart, that we really know instruction, that we're gonna do everything it takes to get their kid to where they potentially could be. That is an amazing feeling. I want our community so proud of our school and of their kids.
In Dr. Bracy's absence, Dr. Wayne and Dr. Komati are going to help present the division's fully accredited banners to the school principals so they can proudly hang these banners at their schools. First up, Mr. Paul Wilson from Brighton. Mr. Wilson was Brighton's fifth principal in five years last year. And he vowed to his students and staff it would be a year of success, and guess what? They proved that was the case. At this time, I'm gonna ask that the board will come down also so they can take a picture with the principal and his banner. Alright. Next up, Dr. Barbara Kimsey is here for Churchland Middle School. She should be proud because right now Churchland is the only middle school in our division to earn full accreditation. But Churchland became the first middle school since 2012 to earn accreditation, and for those who have made a visit to the school, you know it because their GPS is for success at Churchland Middle School. Let's give it up again for Dr. Kimsey. And we're gonna ask that the board will gather down and take a picture with Dr. Kimsey and her brand-new accreditation banner. We're now moving on to Agenda Item 7.1. Will now be a presentation, resolution recognized in November as Family Engagement and Education Month. Dr. Komati.
Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair, Dr. Wayne, members of the board. I bring to unite a presentation of a Certificate of Recognition. By virtue of the authority vested in the Constitution of Virginia and the Governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia, there is hereby officially recognized Family Involvement and Education Month. Whereas parents and families are instrumental in helping children reach their full potential, and whereas parents and families monitor homework, participate in school events, are active members of school groups, and support the work of teachers, administrators, and all school personnel, and whereas parents and families are actively involved in their child's school, outcomes for all students improve, and whereas parents and family involvement must be recognized as critical components of education, and whereas a strong partnership between educators and families is necessary for our children to achieve success in school, become productive citizens, and contribute to our communities and society, and whereas the Virginia Department of Education in collaboration with the Parent Educational Advocacy Training Center, Center for Family Involvement at Virginia Commonwealth University, and the Family Engagement Network are committed to helping families, schools, and communities work together to build better futures for all children, and whereas Family Involvement and Education Month is an opportunity to recognize the important relationship between families and educational institutions, and the work being done throughout the Commonwealth to ensure that Virginians work together to build futures for all children. Now therefore, I, Ralph S. Northam, do hereby recognize November 2019 as Family Involvement and Education Month in all our Commonwealth. And I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. Signed, Ralph S. Northam, Governor and Kelly Thomason Secretary of the Commonwealth.
Thank you so much, sir. And we'd also like to recognize and thank our title-winning department who's been very active and engaging our families this school year. Moving on to Agenda Item 8.1, I ask now for a motion for consideration of the minutes for meetings held on October 10 and October 17, 2019. Motion's been made by Board Member High, second by Board Member Williams. Any discussion? With no discussion, I ask you to place your vote now electronically at this time.
Let Mr. Lamb vote. It's fine. It's unanimous.
Thank you. Agenda Item 9.1 and 9.2, public comment for non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers at this time?
Yes, Mrs. Brenda Joseph.
I'm sorry Dr. Bracy's not here because I called to make an appointment with Dr. Bracy and Susan told me he would not see me anymore. I've had two children, custody of 11 children, and then another child that I didn't have custody of just was in my home for five months. So I know how to raise children, and Naveh has a problem, a big problem with Churchland Primary. She's been in the hospital for seven days because of Churchland Primary. I have called Dr. Wayne, I have emailed her, I've talked to her secretary, I've called downtown, she's in physical, in helm therapy. I have done everything on my side to get this child I have done everything on my side to get this child help. Now I want to know what the school is going to do to get her back in school. Out of this school year, she has been in class 12 days out of 44 because of what happened in the class. Now it's time the school woke up and took care of this child, because if not, I will take it to court and y'all will pay for her to go to private school. I don't like private school because she goes to church every Sunday. So she don't need, because she stood right here and said John 3, 16 months ago, she goes to church, she can tell you the Bible, she can tell you what Jesus studied for her. And for her not to be able to go in that school and feel safe is not right, and I will not stand for it. So I want to find out who's going to do something. Now this has been going on since the end of September, where she will not go in class. Does she go in class the last couple of days? No. How many times did she call me yesterday? They ain't wrote my number down so she can call me when she wants to. She called seven times yesterday. So today I said, well, I'm not going to answer my phone, and maybe she won't call me as much. She didn't, she called me only four times because I didn't answer the phone. She's calling me for help, and I gotta turn her down because I want the school to do what they're supposed to do. And it's time y'all woke up, every one of you, and help this child.
Thank you so much, be safe going in. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
No more speakers.
After no other speakers, Agenda Item 10.1, Monthly Report for Human Resources, Dr. Ziegler at this time.
Good evening, board members. You have my written report in your board packet, but tonight we'd like to give you an all, an invitation to follow our new social media channels. We are now, the HR department is on Instagram and Twitter, and we are building content, but we also need followers, and we would be proud to have each one of you share us with your followers. We also have an increased presence on Facebook, so please share those out so that we can reach out to the teachers who, and candidates in all job categories who are looking for jobs. The HR report is there. I ask you to, if you have any questions for that?
Well, then I ask for a motion for approval of the transition report for November 2019. Motion's been made by Board Member Hines and second by Board Member Williams. Any discussion? No discussion, I ask you to place your vote now electronically at this time.
Seven yes votes, one no, it passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ziegler. Agenda Item 11.1, Monthly Report by the Superintendent in his absence, Dr. Wayne.
Good evening again. I am relaying Dr. Bracy's report for him tonight because he is on a very important assignment, hosting superintendents from across the country and school division leaders from across the country for the JASON and the AASA Consortium, which is being held here in Portsmouth to highlight our efforts in STEM education. Throughout their time here, the, the attendees have toured our starbase Victory, they've visited our partners in the Virginia Museum of Science and Paradise Creek Nature Park, and they've heard from our students and staff about the program we've built in our division. This has been an exciting opportunity to further Portsmouth' national profile as a leader in STEM education. Along those lines, we are thrilled for our 5th grade learners to take part in the First Annual STEM Education Workshop at the Norfolk Naval Shipyard next Friday, November 15. We're partnering with the shipyard to bring in more than 400 5th graders, and more than 50 event partners will be on hand to share information with our students. While there, they will take part in hands-on learning activities and meet men and women working in STEM careers today. It will be another stellar addition to our STEM program offerings. And of course, November is a very busy month all around. We, we do want to remind families that our schools are closed Monday, November 11th in observance of Veterans Day. And as a division, especially one that is as connected with the military as we are, we want to thank all the men and women who have served our country and who are serving our country still. Additionally, just as another calendar reminder, Thanksgiving is later than normal this year, it's on November 28th. We will be having an adjusted dismissal that Wednesday, November 27th, and all the schools and administrative offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday. With that, we hope all of our staff and families have a wonderful few weeks ahead with a happy Thanksgiving holiday. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Agenda Item 11.2, Board Member Comments and Discussion at this time. And my, my screen is out, so raise your hand if you do. All right, none being seen, I ask for a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Second. Made in second, mean adjourn, have a great night.